All right, Jamie's not gonna be here tonight. Thank you all for joining us for our August thirteenth, and it's not a Friday, hallelujah, town council meeting. We'll call to order, if you would, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Your God, thank you for bringing us all here today to conduct the business of this town, just be with us as we go throughout our meeting, just give us the wisdom to make the right decisions. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen, thank you. Council members, you have, oh, thank you, you have been provided the minutes from our July twenty-third town council meeting. Do we have any corrections, changes, or additions to be made?
Motion for approval.
I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Have a motion in a second. Hearing no further comment, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Public comment, pursuant to section two forty-six of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any resident may appear to the council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comment sheet prior to the start of the meeting, and we have three folks signed in tonight. So we'll start from the top, Tom Carter. Tom, if you would approach the podium, state your name and your address. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm not sure, it's probably more a question than a statement, I represent the homeowners in the Sutton Mill subdivision, and that's undergoing a transition right now from the builder to the residents, and I've been elected president of the board. And I know that there's a transition in progress between the town and the developer for acceptance of the streets, and I've actually worked with Chris, a few things that we noted in a walkthrough of the community that Chris was able to follow up on, there was a section of sidewalk missing, and he got that done right away. Thank you, Chris. So really, the question I had for the group here is kind of what the rules of the game are for a transition like this. I was looking at what I believe to be the development plan for the subdivision, and it's the C's triple zero overall project plan, and it shows street trees, you know, according to scale about every fifty feet, and yet on a walkthrough of the subdivision, there's about five or six that aren't there. And so I was wondering, is that something that's concerned with the street transition, or is that just something that we have to take up with the developer?
I think you, Chris, you might want to fill in here. I think we do not take over any streets until they have met with acceptance criteria. As far as the exact criteria in regards to the ornamental trees, I'll let Mr. Pettit speak.
Well, that's actually what we're trying to find out, is where are the commitments from the developer documented so that we can go check, 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 or not, right?
That would be documented with the town, who is the government's body that provides those permits.
Thank you.
So, Chris, will the trees be a part of, I would think not, street acceptance, but can you help us with that?
Street trees, if they're in the right way, are part of the street acceptance process, but when plans such as the ones that you referenced are laid out, you know, it's really easy for an engineer to put a tree every fifty feet, but actually implementing that out in the field is a different story. And so, for any number of reasons, whether it be utility conflicts, or stormwater issues, or what have you, some trees can't be placed where they are shown on the initial plan. So that's kind of the reason behind there may be some missing from what's shown on those plans.
So there may be, excuse me, there may be interferences to their ability once they've moved from plan to...
Correct. One of the most frequent is fire hydrants, there's a certain distance a tree can be, has to be from a fire hydrant, so that can mess up the even spacing as shown on plans.
That help answer your question?
It's a good start.
Still no reason to notice.
And I realize this may not be your issue, but I'm trying to figure out what the process would be to adjudicate whether the ones that are missing have a right to be missing, or they just got to omit it, you know, so that's the question I have.
I think, Mr. Pettit, again, and I hear you, Lisa, if you want to speak, you can, please, I think we have a certain set of criteria that must be met before council is ever presented with a request to accept those streets in. So we would rely heavily upon our staff to ensure that the acceptance criteria has been met. Chris, were there X number of trees in the development agreement that had to be?
The zoning requires that street trees be installed at generally a rate of one per X number of linear feet, but again, for any number of reasons, they could have locations where a street tree cannot be placed.
Sure.
But I'd be happy to meet you outside and walk the side and discuss those locations that you've seen. We do, as far as the process, we have the street acceptance process, but we also bond a variety of items that the developers require to do, street trees being one of those. So we still do hold the bonds from the developer, so if there happens to be one that should be there and isn't, we can work through that with the developer.
This, the bond issue is a very important criteria that we've developed over the course of years that helps us ensure that it is done properly.
Yeah, well, it's nice to have leverage.
I think you'll find Mr. Pettit very easy to work with.
Yes, I have.
And he will be accommodating and talk to you as soon as you're free to do so.
Well, on behalf of the board, thank you very much for your attention.
Have you asked the developer about that? It sounds like he was eager to fix the sidewalk when that was brought up. Were the trees a little more difficult subject?
Well, we did a walkthrough of the community back in, I believe, early June, and kind of made a punch list, if you will, of about fifty things, and missing street trees and missing trees in the yard was one of the items. And that's been submitted through the management company, CUSIC, to MI Homes, but there hasn't been any action on it that I'm aware of. I haven't seen any, and there's been no response, you know, email or verbal. So mostly no, I think, but we can reach out to them in a more direct way with a more specific list by address and say, you know, hey, we think these should be there, is there any reason that you know of that they shouldn't, and then we can pursue that, so that's something we can do.
It just sounds like, in the beginning, they were eager to help you, but as to what the mayor said, Mr. Pettit's great, and he'll help you in trying to establish that relationship for the transition.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, thank you. Yeah, and, you know, to MI Homes' credit, they've been pretty responsive on a lot of things. I'm not trying to throw them under the bus.
Right.
I just wasn't sure what the process was.
The process.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you very much.
No, thank you, we appreciate it.
Now, Wendy Chrisley?
We are actually just here to...
Together.
For the business item number one on your list tonight, so probably didn't need to actually sign in.
Nice to see ya.
We signed in for planning permission, and then thought, oh, we'll just sign this again.
Alrighty, thanks so much. Okay, with no further folks signed in for comment, we will move to presentations. There are no presentations, so now we'll move to new business items. New business item number one, first reading, an ordinance annexing York County tax map number, my favorite part, six five nine zero 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 two four, containing approximately eight point four zero plus or minus acres, located off O. Henry Lane, this is Ward one, Mr. Shire's ward. Chris Pettit is our expert. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we accept new business item number one.
Approve new business?
Approve.
Okay.
Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this, new business item number one.
All right. Okay, I have a motion, and did I hear a second from, okay, I have a motion, and do we have any comments, any questions? Chris, would you like to talk to us about it?
Sure, Mayor, this property is located just south of the Wellridge subdivision, kind of shown here on the screen, so it is contiguous to the town limits and therefore eligible for annexation. The applicant intends to develop a church on the property, and in that development of church would require the town sewer service, which is in that area, it's Riverview Water, but it is the town sewer. And that's the basis kind of for the request for annexation. The requested zoning of the properties are fifteen, which does allow churches, and both staff and the planning commission have reviewed and recommended in favor of approval.
Alrighty, do we have any further questions or comments for...
Chris, you did say Riverview Water, is that what you said?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions?
I know when we talked about this previously, or when it was discussed at some point, the concern with traffic, just that this is a residential area with a dead end to the church area, and the amount of traffic that would be coming in there. Have we heard from any residents in the area, have there been any concerns expressed?
We have not heard any concerns, we just posted the property last week for a public hearing at your next meeting, so there is a sign on the property notifying folks that something's happening there. And I do believe the applicants have gone out as well and notified those folks, but it is a concern at the staff level, but a TIA would be required to fully study what those impacts would be and what would need to be done to mitigate any of those impacts, and that would be part of the development process.
And when would that TIA go into place?
TIA couldn't start until school is back fully in session, so assuming the applicant started as soon as they could, it would be a few weeks before they could actually start that process, but it would be required prior to the town signing off on any site plans or zoning approvals for the church.
Further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving first reading on business item number one, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. All right, new business item number two, a resolution accepting the streets in the Sutton Mill subdivision into the town of Fort Mill Street Maintenance System, Ward one, Mr. Shire. Chris is once again our resident expert, do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we accept business item number two.
Approve or decline?
Approve, excuse me.
Thank you, that's okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Chris?
Mayor, this is a request to accept all of the streets within the Sutton Mill subdivision. In the past, we've done it by phases, but Sutton Mill is essentially fully built out, I believe there's about two lots remaining, so they are requesting the acceptance of all of the streets. That includes Still River Way, Misty Morning Court, Spring Blossom Trail, and Brookcrest Lane. Staff has reviewed the request and found it to be compliant with the town's street acceptance policy. There are a few landscaped islands in the right-of-way, which we do have a maintenance agreement for, and with that, staff recommends in favor of approval for the request.
I want you to repeat what you just said about the islands.
Anytime we have what I'll call something non-standard within the right-of-way, the town basically does not accept the maintenance of that, so they have decorative islands in the cul-de-sacs, and these maintenance agreements basically state that we're not going to maintain pretty decorative islands.
Thank you, I just heard it in the reverse, and I was like, really? Yeah, thank you, I heard it in the reverse, so it's, I'm sorry, I'll catch up. Thank you for clarifying that.
And the streets are all up to our...
Yes, sir, they've been reviewed by staff, and there were no deficiencies found.
It's completely built out?
It is, I believe, I believe there's about a hundred homes, and there's maybe two lots left.
Okay.
But it is subject to a standard twelve-month maintenance liability period, where we're accepting the streets today, but we don't bear any cost for maintenance or repairs until following that twelve-month period.
All right, good information.
And this would have two readings, correct?
This is the only approval, one.
Further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. New business item number three, a resolution accepting Wamsutta Mills Drive in the Kingsley Development into the town of Fort Mill Street Maintenance System, this is Ward two, Mr. Helms, and Chris is once again our expert, do I have a motion?
Move to accept.
And I'll second that, all right, Chris?
Mayor, this request is similar to Lash's for street acceptance for Wamsutta Mills Drive in the Kingsley Development, and that's kind of highlighted here on the screen. The request is a little different in that it's also subject to the town's Clear Springs Development Agreement, and in that development agreement, it states that a street is eligible for acceptance once two hundred thousand square feet of commercial is developed off of it, which Lash and Lash Two absolutely hit that trigger. So the street is eligible for annexation, if a street is accepted under that two hundred thousand square foot requirement, there is an extended maintenance liability period of twenty-four months, so if accepted, the town would not be responsible for any maintenance or upkeep or repairs for a period of twenty-four months.
Okay.
And staff has reviewed it and found no deficiencies, and therefore, we recommend in favor of approval.
Do we normally take in streets in a commercial development?
We have accepted all but Broadcloth and Kingsley, we've accepted Mercantile and Springfield Town Center, I think historically, we just haven't had commercial developments large enough to really have streets for acceptance, so this is...
Reason I'm asking, because of the heavy traffic that would be on those streets.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that could really...
And they're designed a little bit differently than a residential street to kind of accommodate that, but it is spelled out in our development agreement with Clear Springs about the, when the town would accept those, and what the maintenance liability periods would be, so it's, it meets all of the criteria for acceptance.
Would you have large trucks and that, those types of vehicles?
Yeah, delivery trucks.
Delivery trucks, okay.
You would, and, you know, the turning radius is different, so that those trucks aren't coming up on the curb and damaging curbs and things of that nature, so it is designed a little bit different to accommodate that versus a residential subdivision where you get a tractor trailer going in there, and they're gonna hit every curb.
Go across lawns, too.
Chris, as we seem to have quite a few questions on street acceptance tonight, and noted that this design, this development agreement is not yesterday, and I remember voting on the other ones, but it does seem that we have some discomfort, or at least we want more clarity. Could you make a note that in our next work session that we talk about if we so desire not to do that further in a commercial district, or whatever council's desire would be? Would you make a note to bring that up, please? Thank you. Chris, for this property, the area that you've got highlighted looks undeveloped in this picture, in this image, but we do anticipate more development going forward in this area, correct?
That is correct, Kingsley is approved for up to six million square feet of commercial, and there are plans, conceptually, for a variety of improvements in this area, or new commercial, but Kingsley is kind of tapped out based off of their TIA that they've done that says the one sixty interchange has to be redone before any real further commercial can be developed, so because of that timeline, and the fact that they do already meet one of the triggers as listed in the development agreement, that's kind of the basis for them moving forward and requesting acceptance.
Given what you just said about the TIA, my concern is that the twenty-four month window we now would have if we approved this, there still may be additional construction after that time, that then the town will be on the hook for those improvements or any damages because of the construction commercial, correct?
Within the development agreement, it states that if we go this route of accepting the street today, that the developer is required to basically have construction entrances and do everything they can to minimize any construction traffic on these streets. And so that's something that staff would work with, whoever the developer may be, to make sure that we are doing that to the best of our ability, so depending on what that development looks like in the future, I couldn't necessarily tell you exactly where that would be, or what it might look like, but we would do everything we could to make sure that construction traffic stayed off of this, and that's partly on the developer to, in the development agreement that says they will do that.
To Lisa's point, perhaps in future development agreements, it's more than one point satisfied, more than an X percentage completed, or we won't, you know, perhaps we can add that additional trigger...
Maximum rather than minimum.
That gives us a little more protection moving forward in situations like this one, which I hope we have more, and I hope we do have more business districts to consider, but don't want to make it to where they can't come here, but certainly don't want to take on a burden that we can avoid if we can.
Yeah, I think it's been a concern of all of ours, and past streets, when we've tried to take them in, that if it wasn't done, they're still hauling dump trucks or whatever in there, that, you know, we don't want to be the ones having to clean up after them.
Our criteria is much stronger than it has been in the past for street acceptance, and we went through that, so I'm happier, you know, that we have a little...
Seems like I remember this has come up before, and we've debated it a lot.
It has, it has. We've debated it, and we've made some changes that strengthened, you know, that the street itself had to be in a certain condition before we would accept it. Now it appears that we need to look just a little further than the curb and decide, you know, are we enough complete within the surrounding expected development to say yes, and I think we could probably do that going forward. We're currently in this development agreement, so we'll have to honor it as we would any other, but I certainly think that's something we can yet again improve upon.
Right, I agree.
So because of the development agreement, the only criteria is for us to accept is that they have built out X number of square foot as a commercial?
That's one of the criteria, that has to, that can be met, so there's a couple, one is about seventy-five percent build out, one is something along that nature, so they just have to meet one, and the one that they're meeting today is that they've developed at least two hundred thousand square feet of commercial off of the street, and the one caveat to that criteria is that they therefore have to do the twenty-four month extended maintenance liability period.
Further questions? Hearing none, I want to restate, I believe, was it Councilman Moody that made the motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, all right, Councilman Moody, you had indicated to accept, but it, you, did you mean to say approve of this particular?
Yeah, move, for approval.
Thank you, okay, I'm just trying to keep a straight.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Thank you. We all have this accepting in our agenda, so we're looking at it.
Yeah.
So it's easy to say it, it's two A words, so we have a motion for approval in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Got one nay over here with Ms. McCarley. All right, new business item number four, approval from council to authorize staff to start the procurement process to select an auction company to sell the two homes at Dobie's Bridge Park location. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve new business item number four.
Thank you, thank you.
Second.
All right, got an approval in a second. Chris, would you like to talk to us?
Mayor, this is really just asking for council's blessing to begin the process of procurement to select a company to auction off the homes that were recently purchased at the entrance of Dobie's Bridge Park in that general location, so really, it's just a request to give staff authorization to start that process, selecting an auction company would come back before, I believe, depending on the cost for approval.
For any of the audience that is either watching this later or here tonight, the town determined, and we're very fortunate, to purchase land adjacent, contiguous to the park on Dobie's Bridge that had two homes that are vacant at this point, actually have three, but one's got a fire truck beside of it most of the time, and for us to move forward with taking advantage of that additional land for either parking or expansion of the park, we must find someone that's willing to purchase and remove the homes, so this is just a step in that direction.
In lieu of tearing them down.
In lieu of tearing them down. Alrighty, anyone have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you.
Give it a chance, I'll drink it, pass.
Sorry, I'll check with you next time. Information discussion, item number one, update on expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, completion of phase one, Greg Rushing. Good afternoon, evening.
Good evening, council and mayor. Just a very short update on the wastewater treatment plant. Phase one, we have received our operating permit for that part of the project. It is the small part of the project, unfortunately, it being only around eight million, a little over. We had a great team working together, we'll stick with Hazen and Sawyer, our engineers for the treatment plant, but our contractor was excellent in state utility, one of their subs was Smart Electric, if you get a chance to go on their website, they did some drone overflies during construction that were excellent to watch, even from my office.
Yay.
But we have completed that, we are very near getting the construction permits for phase two, pending, of course, the funding side of it, but...
We're getting there.
That's the updates on the treatment plant thus far.
All right, it's always good to hear on budget, good work relationships, process, progress being made.
Honestly, it's rare, but...
It is rare.
It worked out extremely well.
So let's not lose sight of that, it is a rare but a good thing. Any questions for Greg?
Thank you for coming to us and letting us know.
No problem.
Don't make it a priority.
I will say, it's a normal thing, it's a normal thing that we get operating permits, but Davy mentioned this was probably more important than...
It is, and we really appreciate being able to ask questions if we have them, and hear good news, we'd like to hear good news frequently.
Every now and then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Again, for those in the audience, we are doing a major upgrade to our, an expansion of our sewer system, and Greg is handling that very nicely for the town. Thank you so much. Okay, we have no executive session this evening, so we'll start with you, Mr. Huntley, do you have anything for the good of the order?
I'm fine.
You're fine, that is for the good of the order.
Light been striking, a lot of space between us, yeah, exactly.
I didn't mean that as a joke.
This is happy.
You're always telling jokes, so I love it, that's how it is.
Happy laughing, Mr. Huntley, happy laughing. Lisa?
First, I'd like to remind the community, September is Cancer Awareness, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, so there are a lot of challenges going on between the neighborhoods in town with gold bow sales. If you would like to help support the childhood cancer, feel free to go on Facebook, you can tag it, Dana Batwell leads this up and has done it for many years. If you've got any questions, reach out to me, I'll be happy to put you in touch with some people, so you can put a gold bow on your mailbox. Second thing is, Monday's back to school, for us that work from home, we're very happy to get the kids out of the house, but be careful on the roads as they start to go, we know Monday's gonna be crazy because everybody drives their kids and picks them up the first day, so just be aware of that. Thank you for all the many teachers that came to our community to fill in all the new schools and new openings we have. And then I just wanted to compliment our Parks and Rec Committee team in Brown, we had a very productive Parks and Rec Committee meeting last week, two weeks ago now, and we'll have another one this week right before our budget workshop, mainly preparing for that. Parks and Rec is something that our programs continue to grow, we have a lot more people coming in the community, so a lot more participation, so expect a little bit more from that committee going forward, because we've got a lot of projects that we need to get done and get completed in the near future.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
She mentioned childhood cancer. At one time, we lived in Kentucky, and we were about a hundred and ten miles north of Memphis, and Memphis is where St. Jude Children's Hospital was, and this was in the mid-sixties, and at that time, childhood leukemia was a death sentence for a child, and I knew the guy whose daughter was the very first one to be cured of childhood leukemia.
Isn't that awesome?
Things have come a long way.
Yes, they have, yes, they have.
Okay, I would like to start out by thanking Brown, Caroline, Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, for their ongoing efforts to make Fort Mill safe and enjoyable at the same time. We've had concerts downtown that have been very successful, we've had movies on the green when the weather permitted, we, I think, the merchants hosted a downtown jam this past weekend, but all...
But all of that requires the effort of every person that works within the town. So it doesn't matter who's paying the ticket. It matters who's on the ground. As you watch news coverage of all the fires out west and the floods up northeast, I always see the same uniforms, the same people responding to those things that we have here, responding to our homes, to our schools, and to every event in town. So I would like to say thank you. The downtown jam was a lot of fun. I'm gonna hone up on my cornhole playing and we're gonna get out there because I will not do the dunking booth again. That was not a lot of fun. The cornhole's gotta be better, I'm just telling you. But thank you all for attending those. Thanks to Public Works for what you do to keep the grass mowed and the streets clear. And I'm with Lisa. Monday, teachers are back this week, but Monday, you might as well plan a little bit of extra time in the morning for your commute and, and be patient, please, because everybody's getting used to new patterns and new drop offs, so just be patient. Going to school's a good thing. Okay? Ron?
Hey, I missed it. I was out of town. Other than that, I'm good.
Alrighty. Chris?
Yeah, I went downtown on Saturday evening. There's a lot of people down there. Couldn't really walk. Too good with three little kids. My wife had a meeting on Saturday, so I was like, let's go downtown. And so it was, it was pretty cool. I've been having to try to keep up with them. All right, I have a trivia question for all you natives in the room.
Two.
Who scored the first touchdown at your high school stadium in the year nineteen fifty-three? Does anybody know?
Hoss Nesbitt. No, he wasn't.
Who was it?
For a cheeseburger and a local dish.
Oh, oh.
Can I make a phone call?
Yeah, I was gonna say, let me be thinking. Vote a friend, Trudy. Vote a friend. Barry might know.
I'll buy you a cheeseburger.
I have him as a teacher.
Ah, very good. Very good.
That's good. I was like, man, shoot, I'm gonna go get that.
Rack him up again. Rack him up again.
I'm never doing this again.
Him sitting there. If he or her husband's in the room, forget it.
All right, I'm not saying anything else.
That was pretty good. Good, Mr. Moody. All right, Trudy Bean?
Well, I was gonna say, be careful next week too about going back to school because it will be wild and crazy in some, in some ways. And like Chris, I did go downtown late. And for me, I don't do heat very well, especially the older I get, the less I like to be out in, in the heat. But there was a good crowd down there and the folks that were there seemed to be having a good time. I saw a lot of people running toward each other and hugging each other, so I guess they were meeting people they hadn't seen in a while, which is, which is a good thing, you know? So I was real pleased with it.
And I have to say, as much as I thought it looked like an airplane landing pad when we put the parking at the foot of Maine, it was packed. It, it, we wouldn't have had the same good experience, I think, without that parking. So it has been very beneficial each time we've had an event downtown. It has helped quite a bit. So thank you to everyone that uses that and helps us keep everybody under control. Further questions? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, everybody, nobody was jumping before now, but I've got two motions to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you.